I just really appreciate that we have folks that have been waiting for the opportunity to provide their shared governance report. And it's taken us a little longer today, given the amount of information that we are navigating and the opportunity for us to ensure that we are moving forward together. So with that, I'd like to invite our faculty faculty senate chair Tracy Klein to come on up. This is your first meeting with the board in this new role. Welcome. We're excited to have you at the table with us, Tracy.
Ms. Press. All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Regents, the President, and the Provost for their continued support of the Faculty Senate and shared governance. It really appreciate it, and we've had some good dialogue to date. The Senate just started in session, though, so my report is quite brief. We had our first Senate meeting yesterday. So over the summer, typically what the Senate does is the Executive Committee works along with the Steering Committee to evaluate policies and do planning for the upcoming year. But one of our big gaps was that we had to run a special election. We did not have a Faculty Senate Chair-elect. So that put us a little bit behind in our planning, and we just got a new Faculty Senate Chair-elect yesterday. And that is Ken Roberts, who is from the Spokane campus. So I'm very much looking forward to that. We work as a team. And having a team of leadership from Vancouver, Spokane, and Pullman, I think will be really nice. We also feel like it sends a message about the Faculty Senate and the representation that people have through the Faculty Senate. We do campus visits as well. I didn't put a lot about that in my report, but I was able to do one campus visit so far. In September, I visited the Tri-Cities campus and met with leadership and faculty. Couple of new things besides our new chair. I am hoping to establish an international committee. I've been working on that over the summer. And the title would be something like International Affairs, but that would be a permanent committee for the Senate. And that would be to look at the globalization, both of the curriculum as well as programs that WSU will be doing, you know, nationally, internationally. And we don't have that focus currently, so we have a number of faculty that are very excited about participating in that. And Paul Whitney testified yesterday to Senate regarding his support for that committee. I've also met with our Provost on it as well. The second committee that we will likely be forming is the Faculty Salary Step Committee or Faculty Salary Committee. We had an interim report, an interim committee that did a report which is on our website and freely available on Faculty Salary. It is a continued issue for faculty, and we know that, so we'll be elevating it on our website and be hopefully dedicating a committee to that that can work in concert with our Budget Committee as well as the Board of Regents Budget Committee, which I will be representing the Senate on. So again, thank you for that opportunity. I think the rest of what I have to report right now is in the report that I submitted. Again, it was very early. Just know that from here on out, the Senate is pretty active. We meet twice a month, and in between, we have Steering Committee meetings. So I look forward to continued dialogue and the opportunity to collaborate with all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Are there questions for Tracy? Okay. One of the things that I think is really important is as we move forward, I'm happy to have welcomed our new Provost, that there continues to be a strong connection between the Board of Regents and our Faculty Senate. And so it's nice to have the Faculty Senate Chair actually live in Vancouver for me, because the two of us can have an opportunity to connect near our homes. I am really excited to have the Faculty Senate involved in helping with the education on the budget. So thank you for serving on that ad hoc committee and to be actively involved in that. We just want to continue to keep that relationship strong again through the support of our Provost and our Faculty Senate. So thank you for all you're doing. All right. Next up is our Graduate Professional Student Association President A.J. Barm. Thank you for being here, and this is your second year in this position, so you've had a chance to sit at this table with us before. We're glad to see you here again, A.J.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is A.J. Barm, and I am a doctoral student and president of Graduate and Professional Student Association. And it's my pleasure to present our update from our G P S A. So during the summer, our Executive Board, which comprise a total of 11 students, we worked during the summer and we planned what we are going to do for the upcoming academic year. And when our semester started, our total G P S A population is total 72 people. And we had our orientation and also two Senate meeting for the fall semester. The picture I have added to the slide, those are the picture that we were planning during our summer, that during the week of welcome, during the fall semester, when the new student come to the campus, how we can engage with them, so that the new student know, new graduate and professional student, they will know there is something student organization called G P S A exist, and what kind of advantage they can take from the G P S A and being involved in the community. So we have our tabling session, we have ice cream social, we had, we organized a hiking, and also we opened up our office for a coffee hour session. And there are a few other events that we organize that, but it doesn't allow to add all of them in one slide. But the new student who come to WSU, we tried our best to connect with them during the week of welcome. But also during the summer, as we were working for our, for the planning for our next academic year, one thing, we strongly believe that as a student government, we can only achieve our full potential if we collaborate with ASW Su. So that's why during the summer, we met with ASW Su President and Vice President Tanya and Brand several time. We had meetings and we are continuing to meet for the, for this fall semester, and we will continue to meet for the upcoming academic year as well. So that's the, that's the result. If you look closely, that what we are going to do as a G P S A for the upcoming year. Our priorities are similar, that we want to work on the transportation. Tanya already mentioned that the parking fees are lot, and it's really difficult for a student to bear the cost. But also, there is another component. Many of the student, they were, they have classes late at night. And also, many of the graduate student, they teach lab, maybe sometime till 10:00 P. M. And it's really difficult, and it's also a safety issue for the students to go back to their houses after the class. So that's why we are in contact with our WSU transportation, as well as our Pullman City Transit, like how we can come up with better plan, so that student will have better access to the safe transit from their apartment to their home, from, from their department to their home. And Tanya also talked about basic needs. We also have our priority about basic needs. Food security is a real issue. Last year, we organized a food drive in our Pullman community with partnership with ASW Su, and we were able to collect more than 1,000 pound of non-perishable food from the community. And we are going to do that this year as well. But also, the graduate student face another basic need challenge, which is childcare. I know childcare is costly, and it's really difficult for us from G P S A to support them, but we do as best we can. But also, our legislative team, they advocate for graduate student at the state level, also at the federal level, so that our student can get funding from the, from the government. And the third thing, Tanya mentioned that ASW Su is working on domestic violence. That is one of the component that we want to consider under our campus safety. Because the student who live in Pullman, they do not just leave here for their study. This is their home, and we want to make them safe within their home. So last year, we worked with WSU Police as well as Pullman City Police, and we have meetings, and we want to continue that relationship more. And we want, we want to know from them how, as a student, we can, we can help them to build the community more safe. So, and many of the graduate student, we have many of the international student, and sometimes it's difficult for them to navigate the law. So how the cop can be like friends to student, and how, what kind of, what kind of suggestion and what kind of idea we can have, so that we can help them to make the campus a more safe area. One of the example would be, right now, we are discussing, we are discussing if there is a possibility to make a neighborhood watch, which will be like, if you see something, say something, and an accountability partner. So those kind of ideas are brewing, and we want to be partner with ASW Su to tackle those ideas. A few of the, few of the G P S A Executive Board member update that I want to share, even though I want to mention the recent budget cut that G P S A is facing nowadays. Because in 2017, G P S A budget was 635,000 for the academic year. But as the year progress, things get costly. But right now, G P S A is operating on half million dollar budget, which is around $136,000 less, which was more in the past. So for our community affair, we will be engaging with Lauren Maklaski Race. We are a constant partnership with them from the beginning, and we are continuing the partnership with the Lauren Maklaski Foundation for their race. We will organize our Halloween food drive, and G P S A also engaged in College Hill Towngown, and as well as the Vision of Pullman 2040 model. From the programming event, many of the graduate student, they left their states as well as their country to be here. And sometimes, for the graduate student, it's hard for them to connect with the other students outside their department. So that's why we make many of the social events, for example, Friendsgiving, because many student do not go to their home during the Thanksgiving time, so we organize Friendsgiving where we gather and we share a meal. We will be organizing Halloween and several other events, so that they will have a sense of community within, within Pullman. But we also have our University Affair Committee Chair. In WSU, there are multiple university committees. They need graduate student, they need graduate student representation within their community. For example, the Ured Board, S N A Face Committee. So what our University Affair Committee does, they make sure that every university board, more than 42, have a graduate student representative within their, within their committee. For the award and scholarship, with the graduate, with the graduate school, every year, we organized our research exposition, where more than 80 student get the chance to showcase their research in front of esteemed scientist, maybe faculty professor, and also to their peers. And they, they are planning that event right now, which will be hosting during the spring semester. And for our Vice President of Legislative Affair, every year, we organize a Cougar Lobby Day. It's a cook day at the Capitol at Olympia, where 80 student, or this year, we are targeting more than 100 student, go to Olympia, meet with the legislature, and advocate for the higher education. So our legislative team already working on that in collaboration with ASW Su, not only Pullman Campus, but all the other WSU campuses. And with that, that is the report that G P S A have for, for this year. And if there is any question, I will be happy to take questions.
Thank you, A.J. Are there any other questions or comments? Regent Powell.
Hi, A.J. I wanted to have a question around the safety issue that you mentioned. And as I, as I understand it, it's graduate students who are teaching late and maybe staying in their labs to do research late. And I know my daughter was a grad student. I worried about her going to and from dark parking lots. I'll be very interested to hear what happens. I know you're trying to arrange some things. On some college campuses, I've seen where sometimes there can be an escort service if someone feels unsafe. And I don't know if anything that like that exists on this campus or not.
So from the WSU Pullman, WSU Police, they do have an escort service. Even though that sounds bad, but that's, that's how they mention it. And that, that was, that was the exact word from Gary Jenkins, and he, he did mention that they do need to.
Perhaps rebrand?
Yeah, rebrand, rebrand the name. But we do popularize that idea that if you need, need to have that service, that is available. But also, the other component that we are in contact with Pullman City. What happened after hours, like after five or six, not many people are available who needs a ride to go home. So that's why, like, having a bus, which is a capacity of 42, that's like too big for like two, three people running during the night. So that's why we are in conversation with them. What if we can have like dial a ride? Or maybe a small van system, which will be working during the, during after-hours timing?
Have there been any incidents or anything that have prompted this?
So as I was mentioning, like many time, especially international student person of color, the students from LGBTQ community, they hesitated to reach out to police even something happened with them. So that is also a conversation that we are having with WSU Police, how we can see police as a friend to the student, instead of what we see in, in the news, maybe in the national news, like how WSU Police can be more engaged with the community. So one of the suggestion that Chief Jenkins suggested us, that if we arrange events where they will meet with the graduate student, and they do have, they do have like, do arrange that kind of event where they distribute like free coffee or donut and hang out with students to make them feel like more of friendly face, so that if something happened, they will report, report, they will feel comfortable to report to them. In my experience, even, even if it happens like one time, that is too much, it shouldn't happen even like once. So yeah, I do not have the exact number, how many times it happened, but it's better to have a precautionary measure instead of waiting for an incident to happen. Because last time, when student feel really insecure, insecure, like, they feel threatened to live in the graduate housing is few years ago. And during that time, we worked with WSU Police, they write a grant to, to the federal government, and receive $3 million to install security cameras at WSU campus, including our graduate housing. So, and hopefully, that will be installed this semester, according to my best knowledge.
Any other questions or comments? A.J., you're doing a lot right now. You're going to graduate school, and you are running this organization, and you're also serving on our Presidential Search Advisory Board. So thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, we have our Administrative Professional Advisory Council Chair, Tony Burt, in person. Welcome. This is your first meeting with the board. We appreciate your patience, as we're running a little bit behind and are looking forward to your report. So welcome, Tony.
Hi. Welcome. Thank you for welcoming me. This, this is my first time here. I was elected Chair of APEC in May. I was on APEC. This is my, starting my fourth year. I'm also the IT Director for the Voiling College of Engineering and Architecture. So I play roles on the IT side of things, both college and campus-wide. So my report today will be fairly brief, fairly short, talking about the, the things that we've done since the last time you all met and had a report from us. We did finish the year strong with meetings in April and May, and April included a presentation from H R S regarding the AP Employee, AP Employment Engagement Survey that goes out in the spring, and we will actively work with H R S to make sure any concerns or questions that, that we have are included in that survey. In May, we had our elections for our new APEC members, and a special election for our executive leadership team. In May, we had a presentation from the Ad hoc Tuition Waiver Committee. And I think that report's already been made to you, but some of their recommendations that, that they had, and it was really just looking at, because one common request that we get is, you know, why don't these apply to online courses? Why can't we prioritize them? And there's some whacks and regulations that are very much at play in this, but they were exploring what could be done and what, what is within our purview. So they gave their presentation to, to the committee at large. One of the things that we were invited to this year, and since I was, I went, because I was the Vice Chair last year, we went to the WSU Leadership Planning Retreat that was in May up in Spokane. And so we got to hear strategic visions and, and be part of the conversation for some of the things that we, as a university, are going to be working on. And as an AP employee who sometimes feels like we get maybe a little bit left behind sometimes, it was, we were really appreciative to have that opportunity to sit in on that and, and be part of that conversation. The, the previous Chair, Angie, myself, and our previous Treasurer, Carla, attended that on behalf of APEC. In July, we rolled over into our new year. We had a, our retreat where we formed our committees and did a lot of our work to kick off the year, so that we have direction moving forward. One little anecdote, icebreaker-y kind of thing, we, I mean, it could, it could have gone bad, but it worked out fine. At our retreat, we, we did a, we didn't start the fire version of WSU. So we, we rewrote the lyrics to "We Didn't Start the Fire", classic Billy Joel song that Fall Out Boy has recently remade, and we used all WSU-related themes and topics. And I'm an IT guy. I did not use Chat G P T, but a lot of Chat G P T went on, and it was actually pretty accurate. So that was, that was a fun, fun thing to do.
Tony, are you gonna perform that? I mean, you can't really start the fire if you're not gonna bring it.
I did not bring my guitar with me today. You know, one of the lyrics was, it was pandemic dysfunction, streets torn up malfunction, or something like that. I mean, we just, you know, talking about the, sure, sure, no. But I, I did, I did get some of them sent to me. We had four teams that did it, and we all did our rendition of the song. So it was, it was a fun thing to do. And then our new, up on the slide, which you all have, just listing our new executive leadership team. I'm stepping into my first year as Chair. Casey Baumforth came on as Vice Chair. She had been a previous Treasurer in the past. Danielle Desormier came onboard as Treasurer. And then Angie sticks around as an ex-officio as past Chair, and Carla stuck around as ex-officio for the past Treasurer, just to kind of help keep us on track. And we are here to advocate for APs and be part of the conversations, and take the concerns that our constituents have, and try to get them to the, the appropriate folks that might be able to help address them. So, you know, I've had meetings with Chancellor Soleil. We've had President Schultz in meetings. I'm sure we'll, we'll have the opportunity to have meetings with the Provost. And we're, we're fortunate for those conversations, because it, it just gives us an opportunity to, to keep trying to make the lives of AP employees better at WSU, so.
Thank you. It does sound like you're adding an element of fun that perhaps we need at the Board of Regents table. So challenge has been set, rewrite that song and bring it back for the next Regent meeting. Just kidding. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Any questions or comments for Tony? All right. Thank you. All right. So we are going to transition into the consent agenda. Before we do that, I had hoped that the board would have an opportunity to, to share a little bit about what we've been up to. I have a long list of ways in which the board has shown up, and I know that each of the board members, I had offered them a little bit of a challenge yesterday to share what they've been up to. So I'd like to just, just quickly open for the board to be able to provide some input on what we've been up to. I have a long list of the different things that board members have shared. I know we're running a little bit long, and so I'm not going to read all of those. But I just would love for members of the board, if there's something that you feel like you're proud of having been involved with, or something that would add value, this is probably a good time for us to, to hear that, and then we'll transition into the, the business of the rest of the meeting. So looks like Regent Powell and then Regent Serna.
Well, mine wasn't quite an event. It was a post-event. And after a, one of the most intense ends of football games I've ever attended, and, and almost an hour of trying to get out of the city, our, my, our King, my husband and I stopped at Wendy's in Ellensburg for a quick dinner. And boy, did we have a surprise, because our our quick dinner didn't turn out to be so quick because there was this long line. Well, it turned out that the people in the long line was half the band. The other half of the band was over at McDonald's. So, you know, we walked in and they're all, you know, and they're Kugear and it was all the go Kugs, go Kugs, go Kugs. And I told them that I was a Regent and we talked about some things that they they did and so forth. But what was so much fun was the stu-, they were so excited about the game and some of them had the recording of like the last hundred seconds and they're replaying it and replaying it and going whoop, whoop. So anyway, it was, it was definitely less than thick, the uh real quick dinner that we wanted, but we had such a great time with them. You know, while we were all in line and then um like a women's soccer team from another college showed up behind them. So anyway, it was a good time had, but but the thing I really just wanted to point out was, you know, we see them you know, marching at the games and we hear them playing for lots of events. And they certainly, both for their music uh skills and the time that they spend, but also they're just such great students. And it was just, it was a a real treat for both of us to have that interaction. So I just wanted to report that.
Thank you. Very fun. Regent Serna.
Try to make this quick. Uh, in August, I was working with the Seattle Mariners and their uh Advisory Committee with the community to plan for Hispanic Heritage Day, which was uh September fifteenth, last Sunday. And one of the uh suggestions I made was the WSU uh Mariachi Group, which actually I'd sent them a YouTube video that was really well done, uh explaining who, what they do. Uh, and so last Sunday, they played at the Mariners game. Here's a little bit of that.
Continue today's Hispanic Heritage Day celebration. We're excited to welcome a group that has traveled across the state to be here with us, courtesy of T-Mobile. Seattle, please welcome from Washington State University, Mariachi Leones Delmonte.
Now they, uh, the singer, I believe, also sang the National Anthem that day. So uh, and this week, they have been uh having a workshop here along with uh Jose Niguez, who's on the right in this photo, and Mariana Silva, she is from Colima, Mexico. And they are going to be presenting a concert at Bryant Hall. It's free, two to three thirty PM on on Saturday, and so they've been practicing all week. I think what's really cool about this Mariachi band is that it's not been around that long and these young people are very, very committed to uh, you know, keep the culture alive and uh particularly the folkloric part of this. And just a shout out to Kirk for helping on uh, we needed a little extra cash to bring the workshop people and he uh helped us out and so that was great. So um if you have, if you're in town, you want to go to that concert, I really encourage you to do so. The woman, the female Mariachi singer, Mariana is excellent. Got a chance to stop by and listen to them. So anyway, there you go.
Great. A nice moment this month with Hispanic Heritage Month to be able to profile the great work that our students are doing. Thank you for your leadership too, Regent Serna. Anyone else have anything they want to share? Yes, Regent Pika.
We um, two weeks ago, we were in Spokane. Um, and we had what I hope would be our first joint symposium between WSU and Seattle Children's. We've had a longstanding relationship and discussion about various things over the years, but this really came together and both parties put in grant support funds, three hundred thousand dollars total, which will um reward um six fifty thousand dollar grants. And there were about, I don't know, Kirk, thank you for being there. Kirk made some remarks, which I think speaks volumes just to having leadership at the top, um being present and in their support. But I think um what comes of this is going to be, that's to be determined. So I I'm here in some ways saying, stay tuned because as Kirk said in his remarks, when two or more researchers get together in the same room, good things are gonna happen. And I really do believe that this is, could be the start of something and it was really exciting. We had about what, Kirk, eighty people or so that were in the room. It was great turnout, something that kind of surprised everybody. So, good start.
We have a little bit of a local celebrity in our midst. So uh Regent Blankenship was recently profiled in a Farm Magazine. And uh it was the winter of twenty twenty-three, but really I think the point of this profile relates to some of the work that we try to be really cognizant of, which is mental health. So Regent Blankenship, would you be willing to share a little bit about the magazine and how the article came to be?
Sure, um purely accidental, but there was a uh a reporter in the area that took a bunch of photos several years ago. And she remembered um uh follow-up dinner at at the farmhouse. I I played the piano for her that night. And um years later, this national magazine, this is published by John Deere, and uh they were doing a a feature article um nationwide on mental health of uh people on the land. And uh the subject came up and uh so she remembered being at my house and did a feature. They had photographs in the, in the printed version, but it was a, it's a very nice reliving since uh mental health was front and center several years ago on campus. And uh it was nice, nice to revisit some of those issues. So I was just able to share a little bit of experience and it was kind of a fun, uh fun article.
Thank you. And when you have the opportunity to be in your presence and hear you play the piano, then I think my mental health is so much better too. So you are incredible. Anything else from the board that you might want to share? All right, there is a really long list of all of the different events and ways in which this board is showing up, is active and is supporting WSU Cougars. I'd like to go ahead and move us into our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda before us today, which are included in your packet. Approval of the April nineteenth, June sixth and seventh, and June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes, retreat minutes, and special meeting minutes are included. I'd like to just check to see, are there any Regents that would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing no requests for removal, I move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say yay. Any opposed? Right, motion passes. We'll now move on to committee reports. I'd like to remind the audience members that the committees of the Board of Regents met yesterday and one earlier this morning to review, discuss, and ask questions about each agenda item. Additionally, many items are discussed at several meetings before the board votes on the matter, though it may seem we're moving quickly through the portion of this meeting that will be a recap of what was shared in the committee meetings. We do want to make it clear that there is a lot of thoughtful consideration and deliberation given to each of these action items. So I'd ask that each of the board members are able to provide an overview of what occurred during those committee meetings. And we'll start with our Strategic and Operational Excellence Committee report by Regent Dickinson.
Thank you, Chair Shower. Um, we had a packed agenda yesterday morning um as it pertained to the Strategic and Operational Excellence Committee. Uh, we began with an integrated and aligned planning discussion in which Chris Hoyt um and myself and Regent Pika have been working on. And really, um for the purpose of today's meeting, um I'll simply state that we were able to kind of establish a current state of all of our plans. Perhaps a centralization of where they all live. Um, and now we will begin to evaluate um alignment, integration, common threads, um and drafting a plan of where and how we might want to go forward. Um, the WSU brand uh marketing team, um Phil Wyler and Holly Sitzman uh shared the Here We Go launch campaign, which is very, very exciting um in this quest that we have to tell um our WSU story and to, and really shout it out to the masses. So that was really exciting to kind of see how um that is unfolding. And I think my biggest takeaway, and I, I, it's funny, it the the board has kind of used this language now multiple times in the last twenty-four hours, but the takeaway from that campaign is we go together and it is uh my hope and my challenge to WSU around how that we go together becomes the um mantra both internally as well as externally and that we raise the boat together, not independent of one another. So a really exciting uh marketing update and um appreciate the work that went into the Here We Go campaign. The third piece is we had um our Sustainability Task Force, Julie Pedwoski, um present to us. And I think again, another massive kind of eye-opening piece is WSU is leading and doing a whole lot of work holistically on sustainability across all our campuses. And we probably could be doing a better job of, one, communicating what what those efforts are and the progress that's being made in those spaces. And then understanding that uh the role in which, where the Regents play versus the foundation plays and the desire and um ongoing discussion around divestment of fossil fuels, that is one component of sustainability. And this task force really looks kind of at the whole overarching work that they have going on at this time. Um, our fourth item was, we did have our Chief Compliance and Risk Management Update. We had Charles Camersall and Phil Wyler speak to us specifically about they broke it down, I should say, Charles worked with two different groups to break down two main risks that the university is really focused in on right now. And and I, I think on behalf of the Board of Regents, we're very appreciative of that. The first risk is truly the political climate, social change, free speech component. And we were um able to kind of dive in and understand where the institution is at around how we navigate and ensure that we protect free speech as well as how we find a balance um for our research institution being a teaching, research, and service institution, while then also creating the right space for free speech to occur on our campuses and with our students. Um, and continuing to understand how we review our practices, processes, and ensuring that there's, if the fairness is appropriate, but also ensuring that WSU is prepared for any kind of potential scenario, how are we going to navigate that and um that kind of risk recovery, if you will, something that Regent Powell, you know, asked about, and I think um we'll continue to want to learn more and um hear more about that. The second risk uh that was so timely um was presented to us by um Leslie Brunelli, as well as Tony Oppheim. And it was really on cybersecurity. Um, I don't know if any of us can have enough information on cybersecurity. Um, I think the quote of the day was uh from Tony where he said, "We have to be perfect every day. Our adversaries only have to get lucky every once in a while." And um I again, really appreciate the transition of thinking of if this is gonna happen, but it's happening on like every day. And how are we navigating that as an institution? And what are we doing to put the guardrails and the safe um components in place? And um feel like we absolutely have the right team to be doing that. And then our last piece that we um um went through was enhancing the research competitiveness multi-year system-wide plan and Michael Wolcott and Kim Kristin um presented to us. And I don't know, I would just say I was blown away by the depth of work and um thought that went into this presentation and but more importantly into the work around identifying the five key strengths um of this university in as it pertains to um research, the indicators around the research strength around critical mass of faculty sustained and um long-term funding and then community and societal benefit. I, I think that um provost, our provost shared it best yesterday when it's a model for perhaps how we look at many other things on our campus. And so um the way in which they've organized around what we are doing and how we can double down in that space was just really, really exciting and I think very, very um encouraging for those that are in the space of research at our university. It helps us get organized and get right in alongside them as a focal point. So um it just really was, I I, I think, really an amazing amount of content, but um to those who presented to us, um I just would like to say thank you on behalf of the Board of Regents. Acknowledge the work that goes into the presentations that you provide to eat uh to us and the kind of thought that goes into that. And um although we're always on a time crunch and a clock, there's many things, we could go down so many rabbit holes and we're known to do that at times, but um yesterday was just, I felt like a really great moment for this particular committee of seeing forward progress in every single one of these spaces. So with that being said, um I do have one action item at this time, um and it is around the President's twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five annual system objectives. Um, so I would like to move that the Board of Regents accept the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual system objectives.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? I'm just gonna make one comment that um I continue to be impressed with how the um how this is evolving. And it's really clear that uh the focus is necessary and needed, and so appreciates the refined version that we took a look at and walked through with President Schultz yesterday. So with that, all those in favor, please say yay. Anyone opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes.
That concludes the Strategic and Excellence um Operations Report.
Thank you, Regent Dickinson. We're gonna move to the Academic and Student Affairs Committee Report with Regent Pika.
Good report. Uh, Regent Dickinson, thank you for that. Um thank you, Chair Shower. I'm happy to present the Academic and Student Affairs Committee Report, and I want to acknowledge our other members on that team. We've got uh Regent McDonald and Serna and our newest member, Regent Vogel, who serve on that committee. Yesterday, we had four discussion information items. There was no action to take. There will be no action to take today. Our first agenda item was hearing from Provost Riley Tillman and Saichi Oba, our Vice Provost for Enrollment Management on the important matter of enrollment. We were all waiting to hear some of the numbers, which we always receive this time of year. We were updated not only on the enrollment numbers for this fall, but also discussed enrollment in a larger context of an evolving enrollment management plan, which speaks to not only those important enrollment numbers, but um addresses our recruitment strategies, our regarding prospective students. And once they are here, how we help provide support to those students and how we retain them during their time here and then to ultimate graduation. And we all know that um enrollment plays a huge uh part in our budgeting and what we do and can't do. And earlier in the the meeting, we were reminded that this was identified as a number one risk here at WSU was enrollment trends. And it's a reminder just to everyone that when we were, there are, I think, four of us in this room who went to Boston last spring and we were with other universities and colleges and and this is a, an issue most everywhere. Is um, this trend seems to be, exists across um all or many of those of universities and colleges. So we're not alone. But there was some encouraging and um good news in Provost Oba's report. For the second year in a row, our number of first-year student enrollment was up by two point five percent. And I would just want to call out uh Tri-Cities. No Sandra was here earlier, but they had a big increase of No Sandra was here earlier, but they had a big increase of over 16% in their enrollment this past year. And our transfer students, which come from primarily junior colleges, was up as you and and it was pointed out that that was the first time in a long time that we showed an increase in that area. And another highlight, which was pointed out, was the enrollment for our students of color was was up by three and a half percent, which was great. But this good news is tempered by the fact that we are still down in our overall enrollment by 3%. Also, our graduate student enrollment numbers were slightly down as well this past year. We spent time discussing the need to improve our retention numbers, which continues to be a problem for us. But there are good strategies. We heard how we took Provost Oba took and his team full advantage of the Apple Cup Week this past week. And we've, there was a debut of a new video for tours, a college tour, which was introduced just last month, which has been well received. If you haven't had a chance to view it, it's about 30 minutes. You'd have to view the whole thing, but it's it's really good. Beyond enrollment information items we discussed pertained when pertaining to accreditation. And we'd like to thank Associate Vice President of Health Sciences Craig Parks for his exemplary years of service as the Accreditation Liaison Officer and guiding us through several successful accreditation milestones. And we welcome Vice Provost for Academic Engagement and Student Achievement, Bill Davis, in in this role today. I don't know if Bill is here, but we welcome Bill and as that that new Vice Provost role. The second bit of news on top of that leadership change is our accreditation timeline, which has been moved back a year by the Northwest Commission of College and Universities, better known as NWCCU. And yesterday, we also addressed a presidential delegated authority item, which required an update to our faculty manual regarding Title IX. We also heard from our new Provost, Provost Riley Tillman. And you gave us a preview, and I thought if you could just provide us a little insight as to the two things that you featured yesterday. We thought that was wonderful. Share that with the group.
Sure thing. So I I talked about my impressions coming in. We don't have enough time right now to talk about all of the positive things that I've seen walking in the door. But, you know, it's important to say, I'm more excited after three months than I was when I originally took the job or when I signed the contract. Two areas where we've identified where we've got some real opportunities to enhance our academic enterprise is, number one, a program optimization process that we have initiated by initiated. I mean, I have previewed this with chancellors, obviously with president. I've talked with the board about it. I've talked with deans. I've talked with chairs. And I've had several conversations with Faculty Senate exec and look forward to having broader conversations with Faculty Senate. The goal of that would be over the course of this year to develop key performance indicators in the areas of research, teaching, engagement, and DEI that will give us a ability on a variety of fronts to look at the effectiveness or areas where we need improvement in relation to faculty in terms of programs or faculty production in terms of programs, departments, colleges, or campuses as a whole. The second area where I think we've got some real opportunities, and again, we've initiated a process with all of those stakeholders that I mentioned before, is to establish a university workload policy. Right now, the workload policy at the university is quite open and focused on department chairs individualizing that for each individual department. That is a bit atypical in comparable or peer institutions. And what we're looking at is a university model where we have a standard that then will be instrumentized and proceduralized on the individual unit levels with more established workload policies. The real focus here is to enhance equity as much as we can across our campus. In the absence of clear guidelines and clear policies, we all know what ends up happening. While the vast majority of individuals that work at Washington State University on the faculty side are incredibly committed and incredibly productive, we need to make sure that everybody is doing what they need to be doing and that work is not moving to other individuals. And that's something that I've heard repeatedly in my in my initial time here. So we're very excited about those. That first one is going to be run by Vice Provost for Academic Administration and the Chief of Staff of my office, Christina Peterson Wilson. And the second one will be run by the Senior Vice Provost, Doug Call, also on my staff. So we're very excited to have those move forward and we'll report back as that process is engaged.
Terrific. Welcome again. Three months, three months in. Any other points or questions from anyone? That's our report.
Thank you, Regent Pika. All right, our Finance and Administration Committee Report, Regent Ramos.
Thank you, Chair Shauer. So I will say thank you in advance to all of you for your patience as I go through a long and lengthy report for the Finance and Administration Committee. Yesterday, we did have about 350 pages of material that we were covering with eight information items, four future action items, three of which we will advance to today as action items, and then several written reports. So she walked out. Did she walk back in? Our Chief Financial Officer, Leslie Brunelli, that's okay. I don't, it's okay. I just wanted her to be present to hear the recognition and the thank you and gratitude for her just immense leadership, frankly, and a very quick turn to help us at Washington State University really understand, own, and be accountable for our performance with regards to our finance responsibilities. Hi, Leslie. We were just singing your praises. Okay. You missed it. Our first item that we reviewed, though, our internal audit update. We had an opening and a closing session with the Office of Washington State Auditor. And and I just want to remind everybody that the term of that audit was July 1 to 2021 through June of 2023. It was an audit that covered two years of accountability. The audit itself took about a year with a team from the auditor's office. And two important notes. One, they left Washington State University confident that we were being responsible with the items that were, you know, chartered to cover, and they were under budget. And they were under budget to their plan because of the efficiency that Workday has provided in terms of real-time information that they could essentially investigate and verify in all matters of university business. So I think that's important to understand that the audit itself was successful. The auditors were complementary of the Washington State University personnel and that the technology investment that, you know, many of our team members have been going through throughout several, the last several years has been successful. So that was our first report and first point of recognition. Then we went into our fiscal year 25 budget document, which is really something that the team's going to be working on this year to go further into understanding our financial health and our financial planning. The first draft of this document overview is about 150 pages. We did go through what the plan would be with Leslie and her team, Chris Jones. Also, so for planning 2025, we will have an ad hoc committee, and I'll go through that here in a second. But along with planning and preparation for fiscal year 25, we were reviewing our budget execution for fiscal year 24. And again, the data is more timely. And another point of recognition here, the Workday tool actually has about 10,000 clients across the nation and mixture of businesses. And Washington State University showed up as one of the top three innovative operations that has successfully adopted Workday. And we were nominated for an award. We didn't quite make it, but we're top three, and we are the only university that was identified for the Innovation Award. So for the fist, did I say that right, Leslie? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm really accurate here. So that covered a good amount of information regarding performance to plan for our fiscal responsibilities. Then in the information for item, we talked about the doctor of nursing practice tuition rate being postponed. There's some issues with timely communication. And so we discuss that and understand where the 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 schedule is going to be for the tuition increase. Let's see, the next item, we talked about the Budget Ad Hoc Committee, which will be led by Regent Cerna along with our with Leslie. And the mission of that ad hoc committee for this year is to help the regents in terms of education, communication, and preparation for our spring work, which will be to, again, review and approve the fiscal year 25 budget. Oh, my gosh, I'm feeling feeling like you're all thinking this is really fun. But I know it's heavy and it's really important work. And honestly, I know it, we are also just really tuned into the challenges. And I and I think you're feeling our sense of responsibility, our our sense of, you know, understanding of the challenges that each and every person across Washington State Universities is really facing. The upside of that is we're sensing a lot of innovation and innovative approaches as well as the teamwork that's really required to pull all this information and material together. So let's see, we talked about the calendar, the schedule for the next year. And then we wrapped up our information items with Cougar Athletics Budget Performance. And it's too early in the year. So in terms of budget performance, we're on plan to what we said we would do in Cougar Athletics. Okay, so for our future action items, we started the conversation regarding academic year 2025, 2026 tuition rates. We we reviewed benchmark information. We just started the conversation knowing that we're going to proceed and in the next few meetings to really understand what we're trying to accomplish with our tuition and discuss it further in November. Our next item, our next three items, I'll just summarize and say that there are some changes to voluntary investment. We'd like to sign up to surplus property. And there is a technology fee allocation amendment that I will actually articulate in greater detail when we go through the action items here momentarily. Okay, so let me just start with the four action items, if I could. Okay, this is the first one is with regards to the College of Agriculture, Human and Natural Connors. Let me just say Connors. Okay, it's easier to say that. Not Dairy Farm Center renovation project budget increase approval. We went through this in great detail yesterday. We understand the safety issues that are being addressed by this additional budget. The the funding is available and has been allocated. But we're going to vote here to approve retrospectively that increase in budget. So I move that the Board of Regents approve an increase to the WSU Pullman Connors Not Dairy Center renovation project budget in the amount of $150,000.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay. All right, hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, we are forwarding three future action items to a vote today as action items. The first of these will be to amend the WSU voluntary investment program. And this is in regards to accelerated savings options for the participants in the plan. So I move that the Board of Regents adopts Resolution Number 240920-719 and approves the amended and restated WSU voluntary investment program in substantially the same form as the versions attached to the agenda item and that the Board of Regents delegate to the President or his designee the authority to make such changes in the plan document in substantial conformity with the versions presented at this meeting, to execute the plan in the university's name and to take such other actions as deemed necessary or appropriate to implement the plan.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you. The next action item is to vote on the Federal Surplus Property Program participation. Yesterday, we discussed this in great detail. And I move that the Board of Regents approve WSU Police Department participation in the Federal Law Enforcement Support Office 1033 program, Military Surplus Property.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right, hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you. And the final action item is to vote on establishing the WSU Pullman undergraduate technology fee allocation amendment. I move that the Board of Regents approve changes to the WSU Pullman undergraduate fee allocations as recommended by the Pullman Undergraduate Student Technology Fee Committee and approved by Pullman ASWSU for the 2025 fiscal year.
Is there a second? I was looking at. Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And I do want to just make sure that I'm noting that for the record, it was decided that these three action items would be present, these three items would be presented as action items rather than future action items in accordance with the Board of Regents bylaws 212B.
That concludes the Finance and Administration Committee Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Ramos. In addition to the hat that you're wearing, which is a very large one on this committee, you are also chairing the Presidential Search Advisory Committee. So appreciate all that you're doing right now. Next up is the Executive and Governance Committee Report, which is my committee report. And while it seems like we just had this committee, which we did this morning, it is important that we review for those that are watching and that didn't have the chance to hear this committee, that you hear a bit about some of the highlights from the committee. We had our Attorney General Nathan Dean, who presented on a review of our conflict of interest forms, which hopefully we've all reviewed and feel comfortable signing and submitting to our Board of Regents team. We also discussed a conversation that we had at our retreat in June relative to our community agreements. And we had some good additions and discussion and moved that forward. We heard from Regent Pika as to our onboarding ad hoc committee and reviewed the board competency competency matrix that we've put together, which is a part of the work that Regent Dickinson moved forward as she was in her role as chair to begin this process of some of this just good governance that we're trying to ensure that we're moving forward while also moving forward the initiatives of the university at the same time. I have one action item from this today's discussion. And I will say that I have debated since this morning whether or not we will address this action item of approving the presidential leadership profile. It is important to me that we move quickly and not so quickly. that we're not keeping everyone feeling as though they have enough time to provide input. I'm going to hand out right now a revised version of the Presidential Leadership Profile based on the conversation that we had this morning. This doesn't give you much time to review that leadership profile when you are getting it at the same time that you may be approving this leadership profile. Let me tell you what has happened since this morning's committee session and what you'll see included in this revised uh, recommended leadership profile. We went ahead and we printed the document for you so that it has the tracked changes, so that it's easy for you to run through this leadership profile. We added in the first university overview to R one Public Research Universities. If you move forward to page six under Athletics Sparking Statewide Pride, um, I removed language as it relates to affiliate membership in the Mountain West and West Coast Conferences. I included language that said WSU is a leader in rebuilding the Pac twelve conference. So a reflection of where we were maybe even a month or two ago and where we're headed in our athletics program. Same page, page six, I removed a specific number relative to our fundraising and ensured that we were using the same two numbers, which is more than a hundred and fifty million in total philanthropic activity, so consistency there. We move to the next page, page seven, under the role of the President. Luckily, the President has eleven members of the Board of Regents, so that one additional member rather than ten. So just clean that up a little bit, instead of ten in the profile, there are actually eleven. I added the Director of Athletics under the Executive Leadership Team. That was just an error that we missed that and wanted to make sure that we included it. On uh, page ten, we changed the language slightly, instead of building and improving, we changed the language to build and improve. Okay, now we're now we're into the the meat of the changes. On page twelve, Experience, Expertise and Inclusive Leadership Qualities. We wanted to ensure that we were cleaning this up a bit to put in place those essential qualifications for our next leader. And then we created a new category, which was not essential, but preferred attributes, and so the list is the same with the updated language. So for instance, uh, there was a recommendation to remove the word deep understanding of the national higher education landscape. So now that sentence reads an understanding. So in addition to the comments that were made about specific language, we also reordered this, and I just really want to thank Nathan and Regent Ramos for the help in making sure that we reordered this. This is important that you feel comfortable with the essential qualifications, because this is the work that we are going to send our advisory committee to move forward with in the recruiting. So just want to make sure that I'm calling attention, the first sentence is an earned doctorate. Next sentence that's under essential is understanding of an ideally experienced as research intensive. Next, commitment to values and mission, an understanding of the national higher education landscape, ability to oversee and engage, a lasting commitment to DEI, a track record of leading, an astute understanding of complex finances and a strategic data informed approach to budgeting, inspirational leadership style and a high level of integrity. Those statements, which of course there's more there, but all of those statements moved up to essential characteristics and qualifications. Everything else moved down to preferred.
Can you point out just, I know it's here somewhere, I'm just not seeing it, Regent Shower, of where, I'm assuming that's under preferred, the component of athletics recognizing the state that we are navigating right now. Where does that, where's that bullet point? Just want to make sure it didn't.
Yep, no, good, good, good.
I see it, understanding experience, okay, thank you, I just want to make sure.
It's under uh, preferred. Again, you're getting this real time, so I recognize um, this is a lot to ask you to to go through and review. Again, nothing was removed, just reordered. On page fifteen, we had a really healthy conversation around location and travel expectations, and I'm hoping that this statement reflects what we're comfortable publishing in the leadership profile right now. The office of the President is based on the Pullman campus and the President is expected to reside in Washington State. Extensive travel will be required to effectively carry out university business across the WSU system, meet with donors and represent WSU in Olympia, Washington DC and other locations as needed. Everything else has been removed, and I believe there is an additional conversation that is needed here to talk about the feedback that we've heard relative to where the President spends the President's time. I think the root cause of that is a clarity of understanding around our system and the role of the President. And so I am not comfortable with adding additional language until this board has the opportunity to spend time having a conversation as opposed to making a decision in a hasty way by way of where the President lives. That does not minimize or dismiss any of the feedback here, and I'm open to if the board feels like that's an essential component of this leadership profile, then we take the time we need and we call a special meeting to discuss that, but right now, in lieu of doing that, I've just removed that element. Next up is the compensation. We kept the language that was offered by our attorney and by our HR team, and I added the recommended base salary that I shared with the group of six hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand annually. All right, that is the changes that I heard in the conversation earlier this morning in a revised draft. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, and I want to be really clear, folks don't feel comfortable with this. I'm open to another motion that might delay moving this forward. I move that the Board of Regents approve the revised Presidential Leadership Profile as presented and distributed in this meeting. Is there a second? Any discussion?
So one, I first want to um, just say thank you to being able to have a conversation and a differing of opinion, because that's not always what we do as as a board. So I thought that um, everybody brought up some really, really good points. And I do think perhaps my unease with some of the language here is not because I'm fixated on where it needs to reside, but I think there the clarity that um, around, you know, expectations and role of the President versus understanding what a chancellor and of Pullman and, you know, what that looks like as well. That being said, for the, I appreciate at least calling out that you should be a resident in the state of Washington. I know my personal opinion is popular with some and probably very unpopular with others, but I will be voting yes on the document, understanding that there will be unintended consequences by not having your potential at calling out where the President should reside, I want to be on record for saying that. I also want to be on record for saying that I trust my fellow Regents um, that are running the search committee, because I'm not integrate like a part of that component, that I think there can be um, deal points and negotiation, that there has to be some very, very specific and clear expectations of where um, this President um, shows up, how they lean lean in, how they lead at all of our campuses across the system. And continuing to recognize things like not assuming that they'll just be places where we think they'll be, because why wouldn't you be? I think we're going to have to be very articulate and very, very clear on what those expectations are. And so I trust um, those of you that will be in the the midst of that to to be to navigate and represent the appropriate way.
The comments?
I really appreciate what Marty just said, and I would say the same thing, I'm content to vote yes on this. I'm content, I'm, I believe we need further conversations around what we expect of the President and where that can happen, and I really do trust our committee to have those good conversations with our President, once we've, our potential Presidents, once we've had more time to discuss it.
Regent Blankenship?
Sure, I I appreciate the comments all around, and I appreciate the vote of confidence in the committee. But I think in order for the next candidate to be successful, there needs to be a residence in Pullman, and I'm not afraid to say so.
Any other feedback? Yes, Regent Serna?
I appreciate that you have confidence, since I'm on that committee. And and we will take that very seriously. But I will support what we were going to do right now, and but I do think we need to have some further conversation about this just so that we all kind of feel that we're on the same page.
I think it's also important to note that in this conversation, we have given direction and had given direction. I sat in, I think it might have been this room, and uh, we were as a board very clear with President Schultz that he needed to be out of Pullman. And so I do think that this feels a little bit like um, that board was very clear about where the President needed to be and how the President needed to spend their time, and this board needs time to have that conversation, and the implications of trying to do something too quickly is uncomfortable for me. So I appreciate that you're all reacting quickly to changes and red lines and um, trying to ensure that we're reflecting each other's voices. But I want to also commit that there is time needed to talk about how this board wants to move forward with the vision of the President's role, otherwise we'll bring in a President that will not have a unified voice, which will be very challenging. And given the national environment of Presidents that are not staying at universities for more than four years, that does not set up our President up for success, nor is it in alignment with our values. So having the time and space to have these conversations is essential as a board, and that doesn't diminish the role that the search committee has, because we do want that advisory group to do good work. We want to make sure as a board, we're ready for the candidates that you bring forward to us, so. With that, I'm going to go ahead and ask um, if there is, I'm going to go ahead and move forward with a vote, so um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Appreciate the conversation and the dialogue. And now I see our attorney coming up to the table.
Real quickly, uh, Vice President Hoyt had a great idea, uh, since there was a lot of drafting there at the very end, suggested um, motion that someone could make if they thought it was a good idea would would be to make a motion to delegate to the Chair of the Regents the ability to fix any Scrivener's errors or any type of typos in the latest draft that you just approved, just so you could clean that out without the board having to take any other action. And that was Vice President Hoyt's suggestion, I think it's a good one.
Thank you, Vice President Hoyt, uh, no, no, hang on, wait, 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 Nathan. We just passed this, so is this an additional motion, not a revision of the current, well, we just passed?
That's right, an additional one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would look like?
I could say, um, I move that we provide um, Chair Shower the ability to do um, necessary grammatical typo. What was that?
Scrivener.
Scrivener um, adjustments and changes on behalf of this document.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes with a big high five to our Vice President Hoyt in the back, thank you. All right, we're nearing the end of our board meeting. There is some other business, and then I would like to open up the board meeting to folks that are here to provide public comment. So this morning, the Regents met an executive session with legal counsel to discuss pending or potential litigation involving the university. Related to those discussions, we have the following action items for consideration. I move to adopt Resolution two four zero nine two zero dash seven one seven and Resolution two four zero nine two zero dash seven two one, approving the request for defense of university employees or agents. Is there a second? Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. It is now time for public comment, so uh, we'll move into this section where we would ask that you try to keep your comments to a couple minutes. We know that we've been running long and that it's the end of the afternoon, we do want to hear what you have to say. So with that, I think that we'll go ahead and make sure that there is a timer so that you're aware of your time. I too will be uh, timing the comments, and with that, for those that are participating virtually, you will remain muted until I call your name, and at that time, um, we'll have the moderator unmute you and return to mute when you've concluded. There are four requests for public comment, so I'm going to go ahead and uh, start with those that are in the room and ask that they go ahead and join us, so William Ingles, go ahead and introduce yourself and uh, then we'll start the clock.
Good afternoon, I'm William Ingles, WSU faculty. Members of the board, in presenting the Sustainability Task Force's report at yesterday's committee meeting, Dr. Podowski reported that all on the task force recognized that WSU's divestment from fossil fuels is a quote, really important topic, and it is strongly related to sustainability. She recommended that the WSU administration develop a team to quote unquote, really explore this divestment. We at Fossil Free WSU urge you to take immediate steps to develop this team, which we are confident will discover pathways through the obstacles to divestment. For example, it was stated in the recent WSU Investments and Endowment Forum that it isn't possible for the Investment Committee to divest from particular fossil fuel companies, quote, in the way we currently manage these funds, end quote. That quote points to a pathway through this obstacle, the committee changing the way they manage the funds. Didn't they plan to do this when they decided in November of twenty twenty one to implement ESG investing? To take one more obstacle, the financial risk during a drop in student enrollment. As stated in Appendix E, Proposed Pathways for Divestment, in the Task Force Report, fossil fuel investments are risky or can be risky, and renewable energy now outperforms fossil fuels. And regarding student enrollment, a divestment commitment by WSU can be a powerful promotional tool by enhancing WSU's public image. I might add, delaying a commitment can weaken that image from student protests and legal action. We urge you then to call for the creation of the Recommended Research Team without delay, thank you.
Thank you. Simon Smith?
Good afternoon, I'm a alumnus of WSU, two thousand nine, uh, Doctorate Engineering, Engineering Science, I should say. So good afternoon, um, I usually use this time to encourage WSU to divest from fossil fuels. Today, I'd like to use the divestment topic uh, to introduce a more critical question. First, some background on the fossil fuel divestment issue. I think we all know the facts about climate change, it's already happening. Last year, there were six hundred and forty-five deaths, heat-related deaths in Maricopa County, um, just as an example. We're also passing the tipping points. We know that the Amazon, if it burns, will release about twenty years' worth of global uh, carbon emission equivalents, uh, and it's burning as I speak. emission equivalents, and it's burning as I speak. So I could go on and on with examples, but what's seen from the outside is how, how will the donors react to WSU investments in fossil fuels? Or put another way, how will the governor instantly react if he knows that WSU is investing in fossil fuels? I think we know the answers to those questions. It looks very simple from the outside. So I'd like to go to my main issue, which is, I recently read the draft report that Bill Ingles just referenced, the Executive Committee on Sustainability. The three authors did an excellent job of describing WSU's good contributions to solving the climate problem. But this draft also mentioned divestment recommendations, but these were substantially toned down in their presentation to the Board of Regents yesterday. So I doubt anyone in this, in this room thinks that fossil fuels investments are a good idea for WSU. And I don't think we need to waste time and money on an expert panel to tell us what we already know. But my question really goes to the issue of simplicity. In industry, we used to say, decisions are measured with a micrometer marked with a piece of chalk and cut with an axe. The fossil fuel divestment thing is one of those situations in reverse where you need to, I think people need to make a decision very clearly, and then the technical details will fall into place. So don't hesitate is my request, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I suspect that maybe just in time, we're running actually a little bit early, and so Connor, are you in the room? Excellent, please join us, and we have a couple minutes. We'd like to hear from you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Connor. I'm a second-year mechanical engineering student here. Just got here from my thermo exam. I hope I did well on that. The genocide and apartheid facing Palestinians is undeniable. You can find countless articles on different massacres and atrocities committed against those in Gaza and the West Bank. All y'all are educated enough to know what's happening. WSU currently takes a stance with its investments in support of the genocide and apartheid facing Palestinians. The WSU Foundation has no ethical criteria within its investment policy, aside from owning stock in these companies, individuals with the foundation and owning stock in these companies. This brings us behind schools like UW and other schools in our area and across the nation. We should show a responsible management of investments to the wider world. There should be language about human rights and people's lives in our investments. Investment has been done and is possible. We divested for companies involved in South African apartheid in the late 80s. Many universities nationwide have divested from fossil fuel companies. San Francisco State University is in the process of divestment from arms makers implicated in the genocide. Other universities, like Evergreen on the West Side, have made commitments to start the process of divestment, so it is possible. Having this policy of non-action that we currently have prevents real debate because it's WSU digging in its heels and saying it won't change its stance. We should get students, faculty, and community members actively involved in the world around them in the decision-making process. Students broadly support divestment. Ask anyone you know. Students are the ones benefiting from the endowment. We should have a say in where that money comes from and where it goes. Student faculty leaders would love to get in touch with the board and with the WSU and Foundation and discuss the process of divestment. Thank you all.
Thank you. Hopefully, good news on your test. We take this seriously, so I will say that the last three speakers have been really focused on divestment. We have spent time trying to understand our commitment to sustainability, understand the policies around divestment, and the role of the Board of Regents versus the role of the Foundation Board. And so we have a member of the Board of Regents that serves on that investment committee as a liaison, but I do think that it is important for me to say that when you speak to the board, and even though we're not engaging directly around this, we are taking it seriously. We are trying to ensure that we understand what is within our role as regents and what is within the role of the Foundation Board. So we have one more speaker that's planning to participate virtually, and so at this time, Nathan, do have Nathan ready and on. Okay, hi, Nathan. Welcome to the Board of Regents meeting. We are going to go ahead and ask that you unmute yourself, and you have a couple minutes to address the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Greetings. When I refer to the administration, I don't blame anyone. Issues arise from the sum of the parts in how they do or don't interact. Good has been done and will be done by those here and not here. As you know, stakeholders have different concerns about the top-heavy administration, lack of transparency, lack of accountability, and perceived want to ignore concerns. Recognizing many listening sessions have occurred. Having served the administration, I've seen how members voice virtues but can't embody them, sometimes at no fault of their own. Initiatives for reputation management need actions that align. It's more than saying it, it's about demonstrating it. There are frictions when organizations perceive challenges or face inconvenient truths. No one wants to hear they got it wrong, including myself. When feedback is critical, we get stuck in us versus them mentalities. Defensiveness is natural, so is fickleness about openness to concerns, but it erodes trust, it nurtures beliefs that things aren't quite right. How can this be fixed? Enable communication, transparency, and accountability as defaults. Foster leadership that takes concerns candidly and makes decisions about them visibly instead of from one side and privately. Set those expectations. Take part in soul-searching across all levels by continued listening. Finally, recognize issues stem from not taking that difficult path. Leadership transitions are opportunities to mend frayed relationships and repair ruptured senses of belonging. Unite us in a mission where constituents feel seen, heard, and valued. There are passionate people here, they put their lives into the university, but they can be regarded as problems. Their sin, not focusing on successes, and there are many which we should champion, but there are concerns. Don't shy away from that. Considering this, how can we assist an ever-more-present, authentic, and healthier organization? It's about being there. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate your feedback. All right. I think that's it for public comment. Maybe I will just open it to President Schultz if you have anything else that you might want to add. All right, it's 3:15. We mentioned yesterday morning that we were going to have two full days, and I meant that we were going to have two full days. I know that the board spends a lot of time preparing. I think I heard the number was about 700 pages in a packet to review prior to showing up. I am grateful for all of the time that each of you spend, not only preparing and participating and being present in this meeting, but between meetings. As we talked about, I think there'll be a need for an additional special meeting, and I would also just share that we will anticipate additional special meetings in November and December, or particularly in December, as we move forward with our presidential search advisory process. So this is a great time to be a regent. There are a lot of really impactful and transformational things that are happening within our university, and I appreciate everyone that's shown up today. So with that, I am going to go ahead and adjourn the Board of Regents meeting. Thank you all.